Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Whitehall City Council Meeting of Tuesday, July 16th, 2024. Before we get into meat and potatoes of the meeting, I would like to apologize that this is not being livestreamed this evening. We are experiencing technical IT issues, and that was put on our site last week. But it is being recorded, and it will be on our Facebook page come Friday. So we'll have a recorded copy of this for anybody who would like to have it. So with that, I'd ask that everybody rise for a moment of silence, follow by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you please call roll?
Heck.
Present.
Smith.
Present.
Harkhart.
Present.
Dixon.
Present.
Brown. Elmore. Morrison.
Present.
Potter.
Present.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to excuse the absent members.
Oh, second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Ms. Harkhart, to excuse the absent members. Is there any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkhart.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
The absent members have been excused. We now have the approval of the minutes, which include the July 2nd, 2024 Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes, as well as the July 9th, 2024 Agenda and Committee Meeting Minutes.
Mr. President, I would like the approval of the minutes. Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Heck, for the approval of the minutes. Is there any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkhart.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Minutes have been approved. We now have our standing committee reports. Administration of Financial Management, Chairperson Elmore is not with us this evening. Mr. Morrison is offered to take over the responsibilities.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration of Financial Management met last week. Their minutes are on file, and we have two ordinances and one resolution up for consideration this evening.
Thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Harkhart.
Yes, thank you, President Potter. Community and Elder Advocacy met last week. We have no drafts or pending legislation, and our minutes are on file.
Thank you. Community Standards Enforcement, Chairperson Smith.
Thank you, President Potter. Community Standards and Enforcement met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we have no legislation this evening. We'll meet again next week.
Thank you. Economic Development, Chairperson Dixon.
Thank you, President Potter. Economic Development met last week. Our minutes are on file. We have no drafts or pending legislation on the agenda tonight, and we intend to meet next week in this chamber sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Brown is not with us this evening. Again, Mr. Morrison has been so kind to take this over.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure and Maintenance and Services met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we have no drafts or pending legislation. We'll meet again next week after 6:30.
Thank you. Public Safety, Chairperson Morrison, once again.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety also met last week. We have no drafts or pending legislation. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next week sometime after 6:30.
Very good. And Parks and Recreation, Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have no legislation on the agenda tonight, and we'll meet again sometime after 6:30 on Tuesday.
Very good. That brings us to our official reports. Mayor Bivins.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, and everyone that's here tonight. Let me just start off by saying, I am 100% just in awe of the support and the people that are here this evening, just your exercising of your constitutional rights to be in a public forum, to speak. Your mind is just the reason why I wanted to be a lawyer, the reason why I served in the United States Marine Corps, and I just want to just welcome each and every person that's here tonight, just so that I don't ignore the signs in the room. Susan, it's great to see you. I love you and your family. One thing where we are right now, so that the public is aware, we are, especially with respect to Officer Ortega, we are in a process from the collective bargaining agreement in what is called Step Four, whereby this matter will now go before me to make a decision as it relates to the disciplinary action that was put out against Officer Ortega. That being said, as President Steele is in the room, I appreciate your leadership and who you are. You are a man of transparency. You are a man that is 100% for the Lodge, so that everyone understands about the collective bargaining process. It is not open to the public, and it's not subject to the Open Meeting Act, except under the conditions of if we have an agreement for that, we could, parties could agree to do it in an open forum, or parties may not agree. That being said, as the mayor, I am 100% amenable to when we have the Step Four process, doing it in an open forum. We could do it in my office. It can be streamed on Facebook Live. We could have a court reporter. The reason for that is I want the public to be completely aware, a part of the process, and knowledgeable as it relates to the decisions that are coming, at least from this administration. And then everyone from the collective bargaining process will know that even after Step Four, there is a Step Five in the agreement that, you know, is also a part of the agreement. The thing that I love about the city of Whitehall is that we care about each other. We care about our safety forces. We care about our people. And that is one thing that I am just honored to be the mayor, to be in the seat where we can do the due diligence, do what is necessary to make the right decision for the right reasons. And that's why I opened the door, you know, for that process. Whether, whatever decision is made after that, you know, there are certainly other things that will be considered as a result of that. That is a segue with respect to caring. Is July the 27th, since we have a crowded room, and since we care about a lot of our residents, we are having our Food Truck Festival on July 27th. And that Food Truck Festival this year, because of the Franklin County Commissioners, Kevin Boyce, Erica Crowley, and John O'Grady, we were awarded $150,000 to do a career pavilion in Whitehall, to get people jobs. Whitehall, as we know, is a city that is, we are a city of grit. We are a city of determination, and unfortunately, we are hovering at around a 19% rate of poverty. That has to change. And the only way that that will change is if we get our people employed and give our people the opportunities for meaningful, gainful employment. So what we are going to do is have the Food Truck Festival this year as a party with a purpose. And that purpose will be a pavilion with jobs. We're partnering with an agency called NCUS. We're partnering with Franklin County, and hopefully, we're partnering with you to let your friends and family know, come to the Food Truck Festival. Not only can you get something to eat, you can be entertained, but you can also go to the pavilion and potentially walk away from that Food Truck Festival, gainfully employed. So with that, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. See, Trinity Nicodemos.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's almost like the mayor knew what I was going to talk about tonight, because I've been reporting numbers throughout. And what I wanted to talk about is, in our mayor's court, as everyone knows, we have a diversion program. Owens Group helps us try to redirect some of it to prevent some recidivism and to help people out. So I asked him to give me a few numbers, and so far this year, and this number's going to sound a little low, but I'll explain why. Of the people that we've seen without driver's licenses and driving under suspension so far this year, 25% of them have returned to court at a later date with a valid driver's license. 25% seems a little low, but you got to keep in mind that at times, it takes weeks, if not months, for someone that's under suspension to potentially get their license. Depending on how long they haven't had it, they may have to take the written test again, take the driving test again. They have to pay tickets in other courts. They have to pay reinstatement fees to the BMV. They have to get insurance, and sometimes, before they do all that, they need to make sure that their housing's stable, food's stable, and employed. So 25% seems a little low, but it's actually not. It's kind of encouraging, because it can be anywhere from a multi-month process. And when I ask him to give me the numbers from January to July, that includes someone that just went to them, you know, last week with driving under suspension. Of course, that person, we're not going to see them again until August or September, hopefully, with their license. So the other part of that is, as I mentioned, sometimes getting employed. Sometimes there are other barriers. Mental health, addiction, food insecurities. I know we'll be coming up at the beginning of the school year, and the police do a targeted enforcement for child safety seats, and the Owens Group helps us with that, too. A lot of times, we see them without car seats pulling into the school. We send them over. If they don't have the resources to get a car seat for their child, the Owens Group has a resource that helps them get a car seat, so that they can transport the kids successfully and safely. Of the people that have been referred to them, they have assisted 40, just shy of 40 people so far this year in gaining employment, becoming housing stable, getting food stable, getting some mental health assistance, drug assistance. They help make the connection to the other resources in the community, so that hopefully, whatever else is keeping them from being successful, they can address. So it's been a good year so far with the diversion program, and I'll keep everyone updated the next couple of months. And towards the end of the year, we'll dive a little deeper into some of those success numbers, because it is a flowing thing, and it does take some time. But it is having an effect, and we see it in court every week. So I just wanted to share that with everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, may I ask a question real quick of Mr. Nicodemos? Could you just explain just a little more about the Owens Group?
So the Owens Group is run primarily by Derek Owens. When then-city Attorney Bivins brought in the idea of diversion here into the courtroom, it started with the Urban League, and Mr. Owens then branched out into his own group. His office is actually located beneath the city attorney's office, and he has decades of experience in job placement and connections in the community to help find people with resources. He likes to say, "We want to give you a hand up, not a handout." So he helps to connect people with resources for employment, for addiction services and what. One of the things that he's actively working on right now, because they keep coming up and asking me questions about it, is we have so many people that need to do driving classes. And we had a presentation the other week with someone about distracted driving, and one of the penalties for distracted driving can be you can take a course. And so they're actually in the process of developing a course for the distracted driving. The idea being, if there's someone here distracted driving, and there's a course out there that they could take, they might have to choose between going to that course and going to work. And not going to work for someone on an hourly wage can have a detrimental effect. So they're trying to develop a course so that they can offer it at different times, so that the person can still take the course and not necessarily have to miss work to do it, to satisfy it. So it's, they do a lot. I'm sure he'd be happy to sit down in the office with you and go over everything. There's always someone down there going over a class, or a book, or a presentation, and stuff like that. But he's been, you know, an invaluable resource in mayor's court, not just here. He's in a couple other municipalities, and he actually, when we have cases downtown in municipal court, and we identify some at-risk people that maybe need a little helping hand. You know, their bad decisions aren't necessarily because they're making bad decisions. It's because they don't have the money to buy food. He helps us out down there and stuff, too. So he's been a good resource for us to have in the city.
I appreciate the additional information.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir. City Auditorium Council is not with us this evening. Director of Public Service, Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. I'm just going to piggyback. I feel like I'm always piggybacking off of you. But I'll give a little more details on our Food Truck and Fun Fest. This is actually the 11th year that we've had the Food Truck and Fun Fest. It is Saturday, July 27th. Gates open at 11:00 a.m., totally free to the public. This year, I think, is our most food trucks that we've had. It's 36, and we have 40 marketplace vendors. We also have the Workforce and Wellness Pavilion. And not only will we have ready-to-hire employers, we're also going to have healthcare providers doing wellness screenings, different checks. Karen White hits the stage at 8:30. So if you haven't bought your VIP tickets or tables yet, please do that. You can get that at our website. It's going to be another great year, so hopefully, everybody will be out. Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Public Service, Greg, is not with us this evening, nor is Treasurer Alexander. The following reports have been filed in the council office since the last meeting, and that would include the Auditor's Bank reports for June 2024, the Auditor's Statement of Cash Position Report for June 2024, the Auditor's Financial Reports for June 2024, and the Treasurer's Report for May 2024. Under Communications, Petitions, and Claims, we have two items listed, and that would consist of the July 8th, 2024 Board of Zoning and Appeals Agenda, as well as the June 10th, 2024 Board of Zoning and Billing Appeals Minutes. This now brings us to our first poll public, and again, I mentioned this in our agenda, but I invite people to come forward. If you need to state your name, please sign with your address, and then you'll have up to three minutes. And...
Good evening, Council President. My name is Brian Steele from Coles, Ohio. I have a protected ID. Can I say 120 Marconi Boulevard and not give my home address?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, that's why you don't have to say it. It's just on there. Just your name.
120 Marconi Boulevard. First of all, Mr. Mayor, thank you. You've been nothing but professional to me, cordial to me, respectful, and I hope I've reciprocated that. Thank you for what you just told me right there. I'm not here to address Officer Ortega's termination. That's for another time. As you know, Council President and members of council, I was here a couple months ago. I just want to give you a little recap. On June 14th, I received a letter. I received confirmation of the letter I gave to the mayor explaining the current status of your police department. On June 18th, I came to council. I testified in front of you and gave you a copy of the letter. On July 2nd, I requested a follow-up. I was told it was being reviewed. It's July 16th. Up until this point, I haven't heard anything. My question is, how much time is needed to review these serious allegations? How much time should the union wait? Just let us know, a day, a week, a month? How long should the community wait, the community you serve, wait to hear some answers over what is going on in your police department? The four things we asked for in the immediate letter was the immediate return of Officer Ortega to full duty. He's been terminated. For the purpose of this, we can skip that part. Ensure that an impartial, independent entity outside of Chief Crispin's chain of command conducts the investigation. That did not happen. He has been terminated. For the purpose of this, we'll skip that part. Here's what you can still do. There is time. Review the actions taken against Representative Ortega to determine if they were indeed retaliatory in nature. And the fourth one, which is literally a softball we are lobbing to the city, is take steps to reassure FOP members that their rights to speak out and engage in protected activity will be respected and upheld without fear of retaliation. You can do that without taking a side, whether it be Chief Crispin or the union. We ask that you consider that, please. We cannot, I will say this, the city of Whitehall cannot ignore this problem and just hope it's going to go away. You have to acknowledge it. You have to address it. Again, whether you're going to take the chief's side or the union's, I don't even care. I just want to see this body lead as you're elected to lead and take a position, or at least push this forward. It's never too late to do the right thing, as Minona used to always say. I thank you so much for your time. I thank you for the opportunity to stand here in front of this body. I will stand for any questions. If not, I will take my seat.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Would anyone else like to come forward? Okay, then we'll move on to... Oh. Yeah, state your name, and then just...
My name is Stephanie Huber.
Thank you. And just if you put your address on the sign-in sheet, or just fill in the sign-in sheet.
Okay. Sorry, I've never been up here not in trouble.
No, no, no. Take your time.
So I don't know how to do this?
It's all good.
You're all right. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous.
No, no. Take your time.
Again, like I said, my name is Stephanie Huber. You've guessed my mom. You know my family personally. I'm never, like I said before, I've never been up here not in trouble. I'm a recovering addict, and I'm proud of that. Out of everyone on the Whitehall Police Force, I'm 36 years old. And you said that Officer Ortega was a Whitehall officer for 27 years. Tells you how long he's been serving my family, myself. He's one of the only officers that ever made me feel safe enough to be able to say the whole truth. Whether I was wrong or right, I was still able to talk to that man. He heard me. He didn't just look at. Just a couple months ago, I had officers at my house for something else, and they completely ignored me. And I called for Officer Ortega to get there, for actually who Officer Ortega trained, which is my cousin. I don't want to, I'd rather not speak his full name on here since you're recording this, just because of my own personal back. But he trained under Officer Ortega, and he is a great man, a great officer of Whitehall Police Department. No one else came. Ortega never came. My cousin never came. I asked for whoever is their supervisor to come. Nobody came. I was not heard again, and I'm like, what is going on? And then that's when I got word of him not being on course, and I just started to cry, and I started talking to other people throughout the community. And that's one name that stuck with everybody, that made them feel safe, that's been around our family, that's around my child now, that was there for my child when I wasn't capable to be. And my family and my mother are here today just to support that man and his family, because he is a great man. He has a great family. I'm so happy that he has an amazing wife that speaks up for him, and what's right is right, and what's wrong is wrong. And as a citizen, because I got all my rights regained back. I fought very hard through the past five years to get that back. I got all my rights back. And I'm a task-paying citizen, and I would like to know what's going on. Because right now, I do not feel safe. I do not feel like I can confide in our Whitehall Police Force like I used to be able to, because a lot of those officers that were once here are not here any longer. And one particularly, Officer Dillon, that was there once he heard the call when my dad died over almost three years ago. All he heard was my name and my father and my mom's name, and he came immediately. And then the other officers, like Ortega, gathered around at different times just to make sure we were okay. And they knew my situation as being a recovering drug addict that has had many hiccups. But I'm standing here, clean and sober, with a great seed that has been planted from that man back there, Mr. Enrique Hank Ortega. I don't know what else to say.
Thank you. That actually works out well, because...
Because I did hear where you said something about being a Mr., I'm not going to be able to, I have a brain injury, too. But you said about resources and stuff. That man helped make a lot of resources possible. And I know through a lot of my trial and error, being in this courtroom, coming through the back door and through this door, too, always leaving in handcuffs, never coming in here as a citizen that's able to speak and actually be heard. I wish I had those resources a long time ago. I'm glad that Whitehall's doing that. Thank you. But a lot of that came from some of these officers that are no longer here anymore, that stuck for the same thing that you're speaking of.
And thank you, and your time is up.
It probably is.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ronbo.
Not seeing anything further. We will move on to verification of copies. Clerk, would you please call rolls to whether each member of council was given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, and including any add-on legislation?
Yes. Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkhart.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Under first reading, we have three pieces of legislation this evening. First is ordinance 55, 2024, amending 14315 D1 titled Emergency Medical Billing and Declaring Emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 55, 2024, and ask for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Ms. Smith, to introduce ordinance 55, 2024, and for suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkhart.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Morrison, second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkhart.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Ordinance 55, 2024 has been adopted. Ordinance 56, 2024, authorizing and approving a fund transfer in the amount of $7,700 from unappropriated money to General Fund 101 to accrued benefit reserve fund 505, authorizing and approving a supplement appropriation to the accrued benefit reserve fund 505 to the accrued benefit reserve expense account, 505.000.51,000, in the amount of $7,700, and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce ordinance 56, 2024, and move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Ms. Smith, to introduce ordinance 56, 2024, and for suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkhart.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown, I'm sorry, Morrison.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Morrison, second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkhart.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Ordinance 56, 2024 has been adopted. Our final piece of legislation this evening is Resolution 1924, resolving to approve, then announce certificates, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce Resolution 1924, and move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
Been a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Ms. Smith, to introduce Resolution 1924, and for suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkhart.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Morrison, second by Ms. Smith. Is there any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Heck.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkhart.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Resolution 19, 2024 has been adopted. This brings us to our second poll public. Again, the same rules apply. You'll have three minutes to speak. If you've already spoken, you cannot speak to the same subject. Seeing nobody, I'll move on to Community Day Board. Oh, I'm going to pick it to your order.
So there's currently the farmers markets. They're still going on on Tuesday. They start at 4:00. We have some great vendors out there. You should check them out. We have Thursday night thrillers going on at John Bishop on Thursdays at 6:00 p.m. There is a pop Meet the Principal Night for our elementary schools coming up on July 24th from 5:30 at John Bishop. Food Truck Festival, which was already discussed, national night out on August 6th. And lastly, there's registration for fall sports going on, which is soccer, boxing, roller hockey, and football and cheerleading.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very full report. Thank you. Very forward. Does anybody else have anything else for?
Covers it.
Okay, yes, all right. And that brings us to Poll Council. Ms. Heck. Yes, you again.
Thank you, everybody, for coming, and those that will view it later. Thank you for those that cannot speak. It is not easy for them to do, and that was all.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
Thank you, President Potter. Thank you to those here this evening and those that will view this when posted later. I just want to, every week, I like to try to push the community, get out and see what's going on. The Parks and Rec Department does a tremendous job putting on so many things for the community, but I constantly hear, "I didn't know that there was anything going on." So get out there to all of these wonderful things they're doing. That's all I have.
Okay, and for that, I thank you. Ms. Harkart.
Yes, I just want to say thank you to everybody being here. Stephanie, thank you for getting up and speaking. I know that that is not easy to do. You know, and your moms, because our kids were friends and stuff when they were younger, and I really appreciate your courage in talking about your recovery and just being here tonight. So thank you, and thank you to everybody that's here to speak. That's really all I have. I did get to go to the farmer's market for just a minute tonight and grab some fruits before I came over, so try to get over there if you can and check that out on Tuesdays.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, President Potter. Thank you to all those that will be watching from home on Friday, and to those here in the chambers. I want to echo the mayor's comments about participation in this, in these chambers, your role in government as well, because we are here to represent you. And it's nice to see folks come out and represent that part of the community. It's really very heartening, so I concur with the mayor on that. I would like to thank Brian Steele for his comments. I take very seriously his comments, and so I appreciate his coming in. Ms. Huber, thank you very much for your passion, and congratulations on your hard-fought gains and your passionate words tonight. I appreciate it. Thank you to the attorney, Nicodemus, for the information on the diversion program. Those are nice stats, and it's nice to hear those sort of things going on. You know, I try not to write things down if I can, and so I try to be a little, excuse me, I have burritos for them. I try not to be so sort of static, I suppose, in the way that I present things sometimes by writing them all down. So I'm sure that I have a lot to say on a number of items. I'm sure that I'll say them here tonight. I'd like to thank some folks for coming out here tonight and supporting me. I do want to say, in light of some things that we've talked about here at council, that as far as a public records request that was spoken about here, that that has been complied with, and I sent, I forwarded 44 emails yesterday. So I just wanted you to be aware of that, because it's been a public debate or conversation. And that's it. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon, Mr. Morrison.
Thank you. Mr. President, I would also like to thank everyone that came out and attended this meeting this evening, and a special thanks to those who spoke. You presented yourself very well, and I'd like for everybody to have a good week and be safe.
Thank you. I'd like to echo my colleagues' comments. Ms. Huber, thank you for coming forward. That is not easy, and I think you did a wonderful job, and appreciate your comments. We're always here, and that's, as Mr. Dixon said, that's part of the process, so please come back. I invite everybody to come back, and certainly step forward to any comments you have got. Other than that, I've got nothing further for this council this evening, so I will call us adjourned at 7:33.